I'm going to start the meeting again, we're being recorded in cell phones. If you could put them on vibrate. We're going to start with old in new agenda.
First order of business is the approval of minutes from September 14th, 2017. Do we have a motion regarding those minutes?
I approve the minutes.
A motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. Second item is the approval of the minutes dated October 12th, 2017. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I take a little caution on that.
Did you guys get to read it?
They weren't here, though.
That wasn't here.
Oh, neither one? Okay. I second it.
Well, we can't, I think we need to table that until next month.
We need Andy?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll need Andy, okay. All right.
So I withdraw the motion.
Okay. We will table till next meeting.
All right, it being 7:00 PM. Abington zoning Board of Appeals. Are you ready, Attorney Riley? Because it's officially scheduled at 7:15 on this and 7:00 on this, so...
He looks ready. He's ready to go.
Oh, this was the October, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Abington zoning Board of Appeals will have a petition of David Federico, 735 Glen Greendale Ave. Need a mass for a variance under 175-2183 to construct an attached three-unit townhouse and special permit under 175-35 to construct within the floodplain wetlands protection overlay district of 228 Washington Street property located on Assessor's map 51 lot nine in the R30 zone. Mr. Chairman, who are the voting members?
This would be John, yourself and me. And, let's see, Public Works, 228 Washington Street, correct? Yes. Proposed location, Assessor's Plan 51 lot nine, the subject is system development fees must be paid to this office during building permit sign-off. Also, in addition, from the planning board, the planning board received a request under MGL Chapter 48, 16, reapplication of reapplication to zoning board's appeal. Planning board voted anonymously to allow the zoning board of appeals to act upon the application, Dave Federico, reapplication for zoning relief at 228 Washington Street. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street. I apologize, I'm a little bit under weather. Along me is John Carter from Russell Wheatley Company. We are here working with and representing Mr. Melville, who's the owner of the property here in the black shirt, and Mr. Federico in the rear corner there, who is the proposed builder of the property. As the board is aware, we previously were before the zoning board with a proposal to raise the existing old structure that's there on Route 18. And the initial proposal was to build two duplex buildings there on the same property. After a pretty insightful hearing, that petition was denied. There was a number of things that were brought up, concerns of the board, so we went back to the drawing board. And as Chairman Negreli just noted, the town council's request pursuant to the zoning bylaw, Section 16, we also appeared back to the planning board and showed them the revised, the new set of plan, the new proposal, which is pending before you, and they did vote unanimously to grant consent under the statute to allow you to proceed to review with your review of this new idea, this new proposal. Excuse me. The new proposal is to build a single building instead of the two buildings and to also lower the number of units down to three units instead of the four units. As you know, existing on the property, and I do have some things to look at, just to make sure we're all on the same page. This is just a photo of the existing property.
Thank you.
An aerial photo, which is classified as a two-family dwelling with a large barn attached to it, small garage to the left of also, which was recently raised or actually fell down, I believe. The proposal is to take down everything there and kind of rebuild in that same general footprint. I also wanted to submit to you another aerial photo of the area, the immediate area and the uses that are abutting to this property. As you'll see, we're proposing essentially a three-unit building across the street is a two-unit building. Going down the street, you see the one family, another three-family office building, a muffler shop and a sheet metal fabrication building. And on the other side, next to us, is a vacant house, a mixed-use building on the corner of Ashland Street, and then a restaurant on the other corner. So, again, this is a state highway. It is Washington Street at this part of the state highway, Route 18, but it's also zoned in this specific section from basically the top of the hill towards Whitman is a R30 zone. And that inherently creates our need for a variance, for a used variance. Because if I can now show you the used chart, the only thing that's allowed as a right for residential use in this area of Route 18 would be a single-family house. And given the character and the volume of traffic on Route 18, a single-family house really is not a desirable or something that anyone would propose to locate in this area. So we are proposing three-unit dwelling, which is much like the one diagonally across the street, the two-family, which is immediately across the street. Finally, if I could give you a better idea of the footprint, this is the footprint of the existing structure and condition on this property as it currently sits. And what's being proposed, you'll see, is to reduce the pavement, pull the pavement away from the wetlands, which are located to the left side of the plan, which is the south side. And more importantly, the new building will not violate setbacks, even though the current building does violate setbacks. You can see the dotted blue line, which shows the setback lines. The yellow obviously is the building. And if you compare the existing layout to the proposed layout, the new building will conform to both front yard and side yard setbacks. You can also see that we've pulled a lot of the pavement away from the left side of the plan, shifted the parking more towards the right, which shifts it away from the wetlands. There's concerns brought up about drainage and flooding, and this will help in that regard. We also satisfy the zoning requirements for the number of parking spaces in that area. And I saw, sorry, my sister and my father were teachers, so I'm trying to kind of just have it. This just is a letter from the sewer department, which has confirmed that this property is entitled to sewer to allow up to four units to be constructed on this property. We're proposing three units on this property. So it complies, we don't have any issues with the number of units there from the sewer point of view. It being wetlands in the rear, there's a river, and I think the board has the copy of the plans in front. There's a river that runs along the back of it and comes down the side lot line and goes under Route 18. And we need to do our best to stay as far away from the river under wetlands protection bylaws. It is a relatively large lots, over an acre and a half of space, one of the largest lots in that area, but due to the wetlands and all, it's a really compact, small space to build in, and we're trying to mimic what's already there without getting closer to the river. It is, again, on Route 18, so the thought to put a single-family house there just would not be, I think, well-received by any of the boards in this town or any potential buyer. We would be creating the three units with six bedrooms total. Currently, there are five bedrooms on this property as there is, so it would not be a significant change. As I just demonstrated, the sewer is not an issue, it's been approved by the sewer board, water is available in Route 18. It's not a substantial detriment, in fact, it now complies with our setbacks, whereas the current doesn't. No derogation to the bylaw because it does fit within the character more so of the neighbor. I think one of the things you were concerned with the last proposal was the two separate buildings on a lot, and we have now abandoned that. We're going to single building, the three units, much like the one across the street, diagonally across the street, and the two-family directly across the street. So now it's much more in character with the area, and specifically this area in general. In addition to the variance to allow the three units, which we hope you will approve, there's also the requirement of a special permit to construct in the floodplain. And the floodplain comes up very regularly in front of this board. This is a copy of your floodplain map, and I think anyone who's familiar, I know the board's familiar with it, but just for the record, submitting another copy of it. The floodplain map, basically, if you look at it, that's the entire map of Abington, and all of the shaded gray areas is in the floodplain, which, as we said, is about half of town, slightly more than half the town of Abington is in the floodplain. And so the requirement is to submit a request for a special permit to demonstrate that what you're doing is not going to create any new flooding issues, you know, if you're not going to change the topography substantially to flood a neighbor or anything. Doesn't mean there's actually flooding existing, it's just we don't want to create flooding with whatever you're doing to alter. And I blew up the area in question, so you can get a better view. The, I'll call it fuchsia, the pink shaded area is the floodplain area in this specific part of Route 18. You can see on both the, both sides of Route 18 in that immediate area, all of those existing properties are in the wetlands, which includes the three-family, the sheet metal building, the restaurant, the mixed-use. So it's something that basically you just can't avoid, and it's where these existing buildings, including the building we propose to tear down, already is in the floodplain. Additionally, the new plan, we remove the basement from the proposed building. There was a concern, you would have concerned maybe for future residents, that there might be a concern with a wet basement. We do not want it either, so the basement has been removed to address that issue. And in sum, I think, and John Carter, obviously, is here with me, has done a lot of the design to address each and everything that was a concern at the last hearing. I think we've addressed all those issues. I think this proposal, I hope you'll agree, would be a nice, a good investment in this area of town, it being a state highway and taking down what's there. We're not overloading the 1.5 acres, but putting in some nice clean new housing there, which has sufficient water and sewer and parking and conforms with all of the setbacks. And finally, and this will be the last time I visit you, excuse me, as part of the procedure that we're required to do, or really the boards are required to do under that same Section 16, since we're revisiting with a different plan, if you don't mind, if we just keep this one. If the board were to be inclined to approve the requested relief, the board is required by the statute to just note some of the things that are different on this plan that, from the other plan. And so I just noted four, you can take them or leave them. But number one was, the building basements have been removed, as I just mentioned. Number two, the number of buildings has been changed from two buildings down to one building, which is more consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Number three, the number of units has been reduced from four to three, in keeping with the size of the other multifamily residences in this same area. And number four, the amount of impervious paved surfaces has been reduced on the revised plans and pulled away from the wetlands lines. With that, we would ask that you consider a positive motion to grant the variance and the special permit to approve this plan, and if the board would be so inclined, we would then move forward to the planning board and to the conservation commission, which will take us a few months to go through that. That's my presentation. At this point, we're obviously open to any questions you might have.
Do you have anything to add?
Well, no, not really. I mean, Sean is pretty thorough in what he's saying, in what he's saying, as far as that's concerned. And at this juncture, my, our job really is to show the presence of what will be done. When we get into the planning board stage and the conservation stages, when we really have to show how the drainage will work, there is, you have to have a zero increase in your runoff, that's going to be taken care of through an underground detention area. That's really going to be the main thrust of our work on the site plan as far as the engineering point is concerned. And the reduction in the pavement helps quite a bit because we're really, it's almost a wash when we go to the three units.
I must say, it's a better footprint than it was before. The only thing that we are missing is what's the structure going to look like?
It was the same as we presented before.
Right, okay, I do remember you did.
Yeah, there's a garage, each one has a single garage, and the rest of the parking is outside, so that minimized the amount of exterior pavement we needed to use. So we try to, we listen to you and try to implement everything there.
Sean, just because you're asking for a variance, you know, there's the three prongs of the variance, and I think overall, I do like this presentation better than the last time. You know, my main objection last time was the bifurcated structures. So given that, you know, we just asked you to speak briefly, you know, regarding what is the hardship on this lot in terms of, you know, I think you touched a little bit, but to speak to the record, financial shape, topography of soil conditions, and probably reiterate, the second part was, would the use be more detrimental?
Sure. The soil conditions and the topography of this property, what drives it is the, not only the river, but the wetlands. It's twofold. The wetlands, presence of wetlands creates the 100-foot buffer that you basically want to try to stay away from there, or you need conservation commission, you want to stay away from the wetlands. And you can't fill the wetlands without replicating it somewhere else. And we don't have, replicating meaning taking dry land and converting it to wetland. We don't have a lot of area where we can really do that. But more important than that is the fact, the presence of the river. It is classified as a river and not as an intermittent stream. An intermittent stream means it dries up occasionally during the year. A river flows perennially throughout the year. Because it's classified as a river, we're not allowed to do anything within 100 feet under the Rivers Protection Act. And if you're within 200 feet, you need to show that there's really nowhere else you can move your property, you know, how, can't stand, you can't, sorry, you can't avoid the 200-foot layer. We are just over the 200 feet, so we'll go, that's again why we have to go to the conservation commission. So the presence of the wetlands, and the river especially, drives what this property can be. We have an acre and a half out there, but it's not an acre and a half of usable land. So that creates a hardship as to where we can locate our buildings. The literal enforcement, to deny the use for three units and say, oh, go build a single family there, well, it's Route 18. And we all know, especially with the airbase coming, yes, the four-lane highway stops at Route 139, but the traffic is not going to stop. It's just going to get busier and busier as time goes on. It is a state highway, and it's not an appropriate place to locate a new house on Route 18. I think, you know, so to enforce that, you know, I think the town may want to even consider changing that. It's still, as I said, if you go up the hill northbound, you run into general commercial, and then it turns into highway commercial and transitional commercial and all like that. And granting the relief without substantial detriment to the public good or without derogating from the intent of the bylaw, again, it complies with all the setbacks now, but it didn't then. The proposed use is already in use right across, diagonally across the street and across the street with the two and the three family. The one building is consistent with the character of the, if we can call it a neighborhood, it's Route 18, but it certainly wouldn't be out of character if you're going down a state highway to see a building like this. It's actually going to be more set back than the current building, so you'd see, you know, the building's not going to be right on top of Route 18. And as I mentioned, we're going from existing five bedrooms to six bedrooms, so there's not any sort of detriment there, and it's all off-street parking, in fact, extra, more than what's required. So I think we satisfy all those prongs of the variance standard, and it would be hopefully, frankly, great to rip this building, the existing building down.
See, I take a different take on this. It's still an R30. And regardless, we have to go by what we have existing in our town laws, not what will happen, what, because I've been told many times, we can't go by what's going to happen. And I keep on looking at this, and now I see three buildings this way, then I look, so what does the guy next door say? I want to do the same thing. And it just continues through the whole town. That's number one. Water, to me, is still a huge difference, especially from what the neighbor said from across the street. And again, the hardship, I don't see where there's a financial hardship. The hardship, I mean, that property's been what it has been from day one, or for many, many, many years. The building has been allowed to deteriorate, the garage fell down, nothing was done, not even removed. I don't see where that's a hardship.
We don't have to demonstrate a foot...
I know, the hardship to the land, I understand that, and financial.
No, financial or otherwise, it's an or.
Or otherwise.
You don't have to satisfy all of it, it's...
That's one of the prongs, though, financial.
No, no.
The hardship part.
John, let me read it to you. Owning to the circumstance related to the soil conditions.
Right.
Shape.
Right.
Or topography of the land or the structures, and affecting the land. Now, the second prong talks about financial hardship, that's literal enforcement.
That's right.
So I think we clearly demonstrated in the plan show, the wetlands issues, the flooding issue is not an issue. Mr. Federico has met with the Coughlin's across the street and showed them this plan, they do support this plan, unfortunately, they're not here, but if you can take...
He likes hearsay.
It is hearsay, but I'm just going to tell you, you can call me a liar or take my word for it, but Mr. Federico can talk about what his conversation was, if you'd like to hear from him. The pavement level, the base of the building is going to be seven feet above the water table. There is not an issue here flooding. The only flooding that was mentioned the last hearing, they mentioned, I believe, it was 20 or 30 years ago when the culvert was clogged under Route 18. That was the only time it flooded, and they said since the town went in there and cleared it out, they have not had that issue. So this is not an area that, as the bylaw says, that in fact has seasonal flooding or periodic flooding. It is not an area that does that. Even though it's in the floodplain, half the town is in the floodplain. This building, I believe, is in the floodplain. It doesn't mean it floods, it means you want to look at your elevations and your topography for your new construction. We're basically staying at about the same level as it is now, no change to our neighbors. It certainly is not going to harm anyone across the street on Route 18 because the water can't get over Route 18.
John, anything else, or? For now?
It's a very different plan to the last one, and I think you've met all the criteria. But I do have a question about the special permit. So what would you say to, the three members will have to say if they grant the special permit, that the area is not in fact subject to seasonal or periodic flooding? And that's what you were talking about there just now.
I was just saying, right. It is not subject to seasonal, periodic flooding. In fact, if you're familiar with it, if you've driven by and the years gone by, it's been an open backyard. Only till recently have they let it grow up because they were trying to sell the property. So it's been a yard area for years. And the only mention of a flood was the one that happened 30 years ago when the culvert blocked, not when, you know, the river came down on top of us. The building doesn't flood, the building is actually higher than the backyard, it slopes back down to the river, and that's not changing.
And you're filling in the basement?
We're not having a basement.
Not having a basement, right.
But just so you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Building Inspector, the foundation has to be, I believe it's two feet above water table, no matter whether you have a basement or not. Yes. Yeah, at least. And we're more than that.
Marshall, can I ask you a question about this? It was originally a two-family. Are they at all grandfathered into that two-family, because everything has changed?
I think by right, they probably would be allowed to rebuild within the same footprint a two-family.
All right. But I'm just wondering if, you know, if you're looking at the footprint, it's pretty close. It is very close. When you tear down everything and rebuild, you do have a pretty much same footprint of the new project. But this could be considered grandfathered as a two-family.
It is a pre-existing, non-conforming two-family. If they were to voluntarily tear it down of their own volition, likely they would be abandoning their rights. If it was, they would have to save a wall to maintain those rights, probably by law, but they would probably want to come in here so they didn't have to do that type of construction and save that and get your blessing to say, you can rebuild a two-family by right without maintaining that existing wall, then build three new walls and then tear the old wall down and then build that up, so something, they haven't abandoned their rights voluntarily of their own volition.
All right, thanks. Will we open it up to the audience? Any questions, concerns? Okay, let's close it to the audience, and anybody want to make a motion here, or?
Well, we can still talk about it.
Yeah, sure, definitely.
I still don't get what happened so much that changed everybody's minds from an R30, three units, when it's one, but, and then there is the past stuff, I understand that. But we've got the rules here in our books, and now, once you start this R30 stuff, again, it's, you're not being right or forthright to the neighbors that are existing now. So someone buys a house next door thinking it's going to be single, or buy an R30, and all of a sudden, you've got, someone comes along and says, make it, oh, I'll make it I think that's a problem. I think also financially, they have that piece of property with that building, they rebuild it, they're still going to get their money and more, I would think. So let's...
Well, I respectfully disagree with John on this. I certainly understand, and I do respect where you're coming from regarding that. I view this as, and I think it's the purpose of our board here, where this is a multi-unit dwelling now, it's maybe for the proposed builder more economical to tear it down or whatever, I'm not a builder, doesn't matter to me. My main concerns was having, you know, multiple buildings on a single lot. The way I see it, this isn't particularly bigger in terms of structure or use to the area where it's really the only spot buildable, as well as to the lot. I think Attorney Riley's proven to my satisfaction the hurdles for a variance in terms of, there is one and a half acres, but you really only have, you know, what, a couple hundred feet tops by, you know, whatever that depth is, really, that's your only spot to build on. And I think in terms of the neighborhood, it is an existing multifamily neighborhood as it is. And, you know, I don't know, to me, the only single-family houses that are going up these days seem to be, you know, close to 3,000 square feet. I don't think anyone wants a 3,000-square-foot house right on Route 18.
Again, it's an R30, that's...
I understand.
I agree with you on the R30, I understand that, too.
Right, but it's a...
That's what, here we're making exceptions and...
And that, to me, that's the point of the board, is to...
But our town laws were written for an R30, and we're repealing them. We're repealing them to, in this topography, they know the wetlands was unusable before, and now we're going to make this small piece of land from before, make it bigger.
It's, it's, it's like, it's, what, it's a 60,000-square-foot lot.
Mr. Chairman?
It's in, it may be an R30 zone, but it's an acre and a half. It's not a three-quarter acre lot, it's an acre and a half lot.
Mr. Chairman, so if I may, because I remember chatting to Attorney Riley about this, about the home, and being outraged that there were houses beside and all, but I think that his argument that it's on Route 18 is perhaps actually a good argument. The last time that this was zoned, I don't know, but I think we're dealing with things that were done in 2008, and the planning board have yet to, you know, revise the zones, they revised some of the zones by town meeting, but there's yet to be a plan. And in this argument, I think it's actually probably a good argument that maybe a single-family can't be built on Route 18, it's too dangerous. argument that maybe a, a single family can't be built on Route eighteen, it's too dangerous. And that it's more likely, 'cause nobody's gonna buy it, right? Nobody's gonna want their kids on Route eighteen.
In the general area where it is, it, I mean, it's surrounded by two-family, one, um.
But there was a new house built right by the golf course, not that many years ago. Two of them, in fact, so.
The, the thing I can't get over is, i- it's a two-family, all right, it's a two-family. So, in, in the footprint of the three family, the three family that they wanna put in, the three units, the footprint for the two-family is pretty much in the same area. Um, I can understand totally about what you're saying, believe me, but, uh, when you, when you, when you have a two-family, and now you're cutting it down to a three-family, I mean, uh, building a three-family, with the same footprint, um, it's, it's a, it's a hard decision, like you said, 'cause it's in the R-30.
So, to carry your argument, you're trying to tell me everybody on Route eighteen now is, if they live in a single family, it's not safe?
Well, the variance is because of the zone, and the zone is R-30.
Yes.
But, but nobody would recognize this as the R-30 zone, I think, would they? Um, except that there are some houses there, and so that's why we, um, just like Mr. Mullins said, our group here is supposed to give, um, an exception to the laws where, um, you know, it's more likely or not that you should give that. And in, in this case, I mean, it is an R-30, and they have to have the variance, and they have to have an exception, but is this?
I just don't see it as a substantial hardship.
Well, in Mr. Riley's language and the, and the law's language, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I can't see that this particular decision would be that, but I don't have to vote, but, you know, I mean, would this have been, I suppose the question is, if the planning board had actually, um, if they'd done a plan in the last ten years, which it seems they haven't, would they still be calling this an R-30?
See, that, that's if, and this is what we do here in this.
Yes, we have to deal with the facts, but.
We have to deal with what it says, and this is what, an R-30. So, the next person comes in anywhere in town, says, well, wait a minute.
But it's not anywhere in town.
Well, I mean, I mean, when you look at this property here, you're looking at a two-family right now, and it's in the area of two-families and three-families. It's, wouldn't be, um, overuse of, of, uh, the property, it, it's the same footprint, if you will. Um, if it was a single-family home, a small, single-family home, and they wanted to build this here, that's where I think I would have more problem with it, but, I mean, when you're looking at the, 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 the footprint, um, it's more acceptable this way. And again, it is, it's probably a tough area, but I agree with you a hundred percent, John, about the R-30, it, it's something that, that, um, should be looked into. Um.
I'll relent on this, I, I really, it's very difficult for me because.
It's okay, though, if, if you, you have a vote in this, so.
I know, but.
You have a vote in this, so.
I just, I just see this being bigger than it needed to be.
Well, you have a vote in this, so.
So, uh, that's all I.
I mean, if you wanna make a motion, you can, if we're, we're done talking about it, um.
No, I'll go along with it.
But we do understand what you're saying, it's.
I, I don't know, I.
I mean, you can make a motion if you want.
Sometimes.
John, John, you can make a motion.
No, I, I don't make a motion to accept it. I make a motion to, uh, uh, accept, well, you start.
On the petition of David Federico, I make a motion, it's a petition of David Federico, seven three five Greendale Avenue, need a mask for a variance under one seventy-five twenty-one A three, to construct an attached three-unit townhouse with special permit under one seventy-five thirty-five to construct, in the floodplain Wetland Protection District, uh, Overlake Protection District at two-two A Washington Street, be approved. The board finding that first, the current proposal of the three-family unit is substantially different than the previous proposal, we're in agreement with the planning board with that, um, and that the requirements for a variance regarding the hardship of the lot itself, will not, um, be approved.
Mr. Chairman, do you wanna adopt, is that, did you read the, um?
All the stuff that's presented is supposed to be.
Right, but, um, do you wanna adopt, and, uh, adopted is the, um, the finding, and the chairman gave us.
As a footnote, we could say we find that, well, I've mentioned number one, um, you will mention that, as a footnote, the, um, thank you. The applicant submitted, uh, specific material changes of a new plan versus the previous plan, including the reduction of total buildings from two to one, the number of dwellings, units was reduced from four to three, and the amount of impervious paved surfaces has been reduced on the revised plan. Um, so, given that, I make a motion to approve.
One second. Paul, then.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for your time, guys, appreciate it. I'm sorry, excuse me.
Before, after seven oh five, um, second on the agenda is a request from, um, Mr. William Callahan for an extension, um, for a variance granted and filed for the town clerk's office on sixteen December two thousand sixteen. Uh, the letter reads, I'm requesting an extension of approval granted to William Callahan. Approval for variance is granted and filed with the town clerk's office December sixteen, two thousand sixteen. Therefore, I request the extension of the approval start on the date of the filing with the town clerk's office. Thank you for your cooperation and assistance. Sincerely, Russell A. Wheatley. Uh, this is regarding the property on seventy-five Niles Street. Um, John, you probably know this, but.
I know it very, very well.
How long is an extension?
It's six months.
It's a six-month?
I'm just here representing Mr. Mr. Callahan, uh, as Bill has already read into the, uh, into the minutes, the, the, the letter for requesting the, um, requesting the extension for the, uh, for the, um, the granted, um, variance. Um, Mr. Callahan has every intention of, um, doing this project, uh, he just had, he, he just ran into other things, uh, so he hadn't been able to, uh, get it done in the timely fashion that he wanted to within the year of the variance, so, uh, he is simply asking for his, uh, his extension, and, uh, he will be proceeding with, um, taking care of this project, uh, and, uh, doing his due diligence.
There's just a couple things I wanna add on this. I'm very familiar with that location, and I voted for it, so, okay, I'm not against it. The only questions I have here are, uh, has he bought it yet?
I don't have that answer. I, I, I do not know if he's bought it.
Well, I'm gonna also suggest that we table this for another meeting, and the reason being, have you notified the abutters? They probably should be, uh, just to make it more official that, that we're doing this in an open manner, because you didn't fill out an application per se, and you don't need to.
Right.
But, so were the, the abutters, I just feel.
No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that.
Not that you, you didn't need to. I, I'm just saying that, so.
I just don't want, you know, my.
I think it's appropriate to do that, but it's not required.
Yeah.
And, um, I believe you were down in my office, and this, um, the original relief has been recorded, though?
Yes, yes, I got in touch with Mr. Callahan.
Okay, that was my next question.
That's an important.
Yes, it is, it is. He, he came to the town hall, he came back to the town hall, and, uh, and he obtained.
It's okay, yeah, he, if you've got it record, do you have a copy?
I don't have a copy of the recorded. Uh, we tried to get it out of the registry, but for whatever reason, we couldn't get. He recorded it, um, yesterday.
They usually give you a receipt with it or something.
He gave me the book and page, uh, I don't have it with me.
I believe you, if you say it's recorded. Wouldn't affect whether or not you could.
Right.
Grant this extension at this juncture, but, um, whether or not he did publicly advertise this or not, but, um, there might have been an issue with regards to if he passed December eighth without recording it, uh, I think there could be an issue there.
It would have been, yes.
But it would appear that is not the case. Um, uh, I do not believe he has to, uh, publicly advertise this. I would maybe in the future suggest it.
Yeah, and now that you've recorded it, and I accept that, because, uh, I do know that that is a problem that needs to be done.
Absolutely.
It's an eyesore, and it's.
He was, yeah, yes, absolutely.
And it's great for the neighbors, so I don't have a problem.
We'd like to make, anyone like to make a motion?
You wanna open it up?
Um, well, it's not really a open hearing.
Because we're basically going to.
Right.
Put it aside for now.
Right.
Um, so do we have the time on that? Do we have enough time to this?
Well, we putting it aside, or we?
Oh, no, no.
No, I don't think, I don't think we can.
Now that it's been recorded.
Not if it's been recorded, right.
Cause I, you'd go over, he would.
Cause that was an issue, if it wasn't recorded, you would've lost that privilege for two years.
I don't suggest it, but, uh, as I understand it, if, uh, the, you're in, uh, proceeding as we are now, and it was continued, that would delay the, uh, the December ninth or eighth date, um, where it would, where the variance would expire.
Yes.
Cause they were, uh, prior to that date, um, it's in litigation, um, it's being, uh, not litigation, consideration.
Right.
Um, but, uh, I wouldn't suggest that now, I would move forward with the six-month extension on the, uh, the variance, because that's paired with a special permit anyways.
Correct.
So, I make a motion to approve the request of extension, um, of Mr. Callahan regarding the, um, property on seventy-five Nile Street, be granted for six months.
Second.
All approve?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
You get a recorded copy down.
Yeah, I, I.
Put it in the file with the secretary, would you?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, boss.
Absolutely.
Before, after seven ten P.M., uh.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, sir. Good seeing you. Having this only vote appealed, hold public hearing on the petition of the Fiori Brothers, Inc., three forty Rockton Ave, Abington, for a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-three A for a planned commercial development, and a variance under one seventy-five thirty-three H three to allow parking lots to be less than twenty-five feet away from buildings at five hundred Chestnut Street, property located on Assessor's Map forty-nine Lot seven in the MUPPD zone.
All right, Chestnut Street, let's see. All right, yep, uh, this proposal located at Assessor's Plan forty-nine Lot seven appears to have no bearing on the storage, and from the planning board, let's see, provisions, uh, one seventy-five thirty-three of the town's zoning board by law require the planning board render an advisement opinion of the project planned under planning, commercial development. Planning board voted anonymously to issue a positive advisory report, indicated their support for the project, um, planning, commercial development at five hundred Chestnut Street.
Voting members, sir?
Three of us again.
Thank you, Sean Riley, five hundred Washington Street, in Abington. With me tonight is Mr. Peter Fiori, the principal of Fiori Brothers. Um, we're here, uh, to present to you, um, the planned commercial development bylaw in Abington, which allows planned commercial development to be located anywhere other than residential zones, the R-20, R-30, R-40. As the chairman mentioned in the notice, this is the Muppet District, as we call it, the MUPPD, which is up off of Chestnut Street, the northern side of Chestnut Street, um, towards the Brockton Line. Prior to it being the Muppet District, this was, this land was industrially zoned, 'cause it was the town's desire not to have any residential housing up in that area for public safety reasons. It's, it's quite a distance from the center of town for the police and fire department, um, so it was industrial for a long time until the two thousand and three zoning revisions were made, and some of the comments from the planners outside the town and from the state was that Abington had too much industrial and should reduce it, but we didn't want to encourage residential growth in this area, 'cause some of them were large parcels. Now, a large part of it on the, sorry, southern side of Chestnut Street, almost all of it, is state parkland, so it's not an issue there. Um, so, um, there's been a desire in the town that this be non-residential development in this specific portion of town. And that's where the planned commercial development bylaw comes in, under section one seventy-five thirty-three, and a special permit is required by this board to allow the planned commercial development to proceed. From here, if the board was to allow this, the special permit, we would proceed to the, um, sorry, to the planning board, the site plan review, and to the conservation commission, 'cause there are some wetlands in the middle of the property. Under the planned commercial development, we're required to have a minimum of five acres, um, which we do, we have twenty-six acres. Under the planned commercial development, the amount of building footprint must be less than fifty percent of the total acreage. Um, not only we less than fifteen percent, we're only at about thirteen percent. The setbacks must be at least fifty feet away from any street or lot lines, and they, all the buildings do comply, and the buildings can't be more than thirty-five feet tall, again, all the buildings comply. The only variance that we're asking for tonight is the variance for, um, a requirement that the parking lot, edge of parking lot be twenty-five feet away from a building, from an entrance to a building, which we thought was kinda curious. Now, this, this, to my knowledge, is the first planned commercial development to be utilized in this town, um, and I think it's, it obviously, well, to me, it's the perfect location. The purpose of the variance is typically, you wouldn't put a parking lot twenty-five feet away from the front door, uh, in a commercial development like this. There's no purpose to this, no benefit, if anything, it just creates more impervious surface, more places to strip and fall, uh, more places where you're gonna have to shovel and remove snow. We think it's a better design if the sidewalk and the parking are closer to the building with some landscaping along the building, which is what is being shown and proposed to you, and which we'll be going into greater detail, uh, at the site plan review, where we have to submit our landscaping plans, drainage plans, and lighting plans. This property, this development will not be seen from Chestnut Street. I think we're all familiar with Chestnut Street, it's basically a forest, tree, tree line, and if you see on the plan, and we've been in front of the board before, there is currently a, a driveway that goes off of Chestnut Street out to the twenty-six acres. That will still be our common access point, uh, for entrance and exits. Um, the land that's along the street is not owned by us. We tried to buy it, but they won't sell it, it's a company in Chicago, so that, and there's actually wetlands in that area, so that's not gonna be developed. It's not large enough for development, and it's too wet for development, so that is going to be basically a, a, a buffer that will stay there to hide our property, and that's one of the intents of Mr. Fiori's design. Um, there are a number of contractors who want a safe place to store their inventory, or to park their trucks inside, in a, in a safe area where they can't be tampered with or stolen. Um, there are, there are areas, there's a, one in particular in the town where there is some, uh, storage and car, uh, trucks being parked for different contractors, and they routinely are getting batteries stolen, truck parts, um, some of the contractors' mobile equipment are being stolen, so they're looking for places where they can store things inside in a secured area. Um, the, the ring road itself is going to be gated. If you come in there, there's a gate, and you can't get access unless you are a tenant there, that'll be, you know, throughout the night, um, and there'll be cameras in this area. If you notice on the plan, as I mentioned, there's a, there's a, a section of wetlands right in the middle of the rectangular, basically a rectangular-shaped property, and that requires us to build around the perimeter of the property to, in order to protect the wetlands. In doing that, that does create us, it requires to build a ring road, it has little, you know, there's an expense to us to do that, and there's some significant topography changes throughout the site, where there's some pretty good slopes, and there's also some bedrock and wetlands that we are working around and working with. Some of the buildings are gonna be kind of elevated with a sloped grass, some of the, uh, Peter has had a lot of revisions of this plan to make sure that the, the traffic flow is safe, and the fire department, we met with him the other night when we were at, with the planning board, uh, and he wanted to make sure he had vehicular access throughout, which we do have. All the buildings will be sprinkled, and I do wanna submit a copy of a, a letter that he had, if I had seen written to us, where he actually supports the, uh, development of this property. Excuse me. Um, the current condition, if I could read from the letter, the current condition of the property located in five hundred Chestnut Street includes an abandoned and deteriorated single-family structure, evidence of history of past fires of unknown origin, access via long unpaid driveway, in poor condition, which is blocked by concrete barriers to prevent public access. There is a single fire. There is a single fire hydrant located on Chestnut Street at the property line by the driveway. Any proposals to develop this property or build a new structure would assist in preventing or extinguishing wildland fires around this area due to the town's requirement to clear any and all deteriorated structures. To maintain a drivable access road onto the property provides security lighting to add and improve fire hydrants as needed. The Abbott and Fire Department and Town of Abbott and Building Apartments will work with all involved parties to ensure that any proposed developments or improvements in and around this property meet the required, the minimum requirements determined by all applicable codes for the safety and benefit of our residents and the general public." So the fire chief has been and will continue to work with us with the development. Again, non-residential development is completely commercial. It's going to be very low-impact development. We envision it's going to be more people who are going to be storing things here, whether it be excess inventory that they can't keep in their stores and they leave it here, or it could be, you know, a plumbing warehouse or whatnot. It is not retail. We're not going to have traffic coming in and out from nine to five with customers. That's not what this is designed for, proposed whatsoever. The special permit, we need to just demonstrate that we're not going to overload in the town services, for example, sewer. We're not using sewer on this property. It's going to be septic. And I think you read a letter from the sewer department that said it's not an issue for the sewer department. Water, the water tanks, the water pipes, the water mains are right there on Chestnut Street, so we can connect to municipal water for the limited water that we may need in this property. Traffic, as I mentioned, we don't envision any significant traffic issues. This is not that type of use. It's not a retail use whatsoever. Excuse me. And as far as site lighting goes, no one's going to be able to see us. Our intent is not to be seen. We don't want to draw our attention to this. This is for, you know, secured businesses that want to invest in Abington, but in a secure way, in a safe way, where they know their property is protected when they're not there during the evening hours. So we think the special permit is, I hope, clearly justified. And the variance for the walkways just makes it a better plan. The hardship is, we do have, as I said, different topographies where parking lots and buildings are moving, and there's no benefit to twenty-five-foot walkways. In fact, if you see the seven buildings, and if you were to assume that there was only, let's just say, five doors on, at the front of each building, that means we're going to have thirty-five walkways. And if they're all twenty-five feet long, we have over thirty-five hundred feet of walkway that has to be shoveled and has to be maintained at an ADA limit and all, and it just, it creates issues and expenses that don't need to be done and is not a proper design. It'd be better to reduce the amount of impervious, and therefore have more of the green open space. Just makes a better plan. Certainly not anything that violates the character of the neighborhood, because there is no neighborhood here, but it is actually, what we're proposing is what is actually desired and intended to be constructed by the town fathers and by the change in the zoning. So we hope you'll support the variance and the special permit. And Peter's here to answer any specific questions, because he's been on the property numerous times.
Okay. I did walk the property, and wow, it's beautiful. Really, it's a shame, but times go on. State couldn't take it over and make it part of the park or something, but, I mean, you were talking, there are definitely hills and wetlands in there. What, what are the buildings made of? Are they metal buildings or?
They're going to be metal buildings.
They're going to be metal buildings. I can only bring up one thing that I know. When I parked out front and I wanted to go turn around, people go whipping down that street. How are you going to control traffic issues such as accidents and stuff in that area? Because when, when you look at this project where the, where the street comes out, the road comes out, there's a bend in the road, and people go zipping right down that road, Chestnut Street. How we, I mean, there's very good potential of more accidents in that area. We all know what the four ways like, up right up the street.
Right.
You know, you have the four way up the street, major accidents down at the four way. And now you have, you're building here in, where the street is, and you have, because you are going for a special permit here, you have people who drive very fast down this road.
Yeah.
Potential of more accidents and more traffic.
With, with any development, you're going to bring in more traffic, and there's obviously a higher potential of a collision at any time, no matter what you did up here, whether it was a couple of housing or commercial, I agree with you. This is actually good sightlines when you come out here. The curve that you speak of is actually more than five hundred feet down the road, and that's general. The minimum that you'd like is five hundred foot straightaway left and right, which we do have. So the visibility as you pull out. Now, obviously, what you see now is a dirt road, is going to become a, an industry standard exit commercial driveway built on the car.
Widing it?
Yeah, it's a thirty-foot wide, yeah. Plenty of what requires us.
All right.
To have a minimum twenty-four foot wide, I believe it is, paved structure, and there'll be a light at the end of the road, obviously, and with the number, the street number, so fire department knows where they are. We're the only people really out in that area at this point in time, and as I mentioned, it's just town, state forests on the other side of the street. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And one thing we did add is that turnaround. So if somebody did.
Oh, turnaround right there.
Yeah, so we put the gates there so nobody could access it at night, but if somebody did come down there and that turned in there by accident, they could turn around and then not have to back out. So we have two gated, that are going to be on key counts.
Yep.
That the tenants will have access after hours.
I must say, it's, it's a beautiful piece of property, and it's, it's a shame, but, I mean, it happens. And this is exactly what this is supposed to be designed for, industrial.
Right.
That was my concerns. You answered the question of the fire department hydrants and all that stuff. You're going to work with them.
And I think you can see with the topography lines on there, that each, each line represents a different level.
Right. Because it does, it goes up and goes down.
Exactly. So that is one of the issues that his engineer has been working with, as far as trying to locate parking lots in relation to buildings.
Well, it's a good idea that you have that light at the end of the driveway, the entrance way. But again, I'm just going to bring up that the traffic situation with the four way and the many accidents that we have there, and that bend is kind of dangerous, but.
Yeah, there are a couple of things, I'm not sure if the board is aware, but the North Quincy end is being redesigned into a, into a roundabout, yeah. That's supposed to happen in the next year or two. The state has been looking at that. And as I mentioned earlier, although we could have retail in here, we are not having retail in here. It's, it's not conducive to retail, because you can't see it, but we don't want traffic in here. We're not, those aren't the tenants that he would be utilizing. So we're not going to be a traffic generator with this use here. It's typically going to be the guy who pulls in, grabs his truck out of the garage and leaves for the day, and then comes back. That type of use. So it's, it's kind of a, as I said, a low-impact use, but it's an investment in the town where the town can get the tax value.
Okay.
I really don't have any questions.
No.
I have a couple. You have, have you bought the property yet?
Have I?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
You have bought it? Okay.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, no, no.
I thought you said walked it. I'm sorry.
No, okay. The next question, there was a lawsuit brought on our decision before. What has happened to that?
The plaintiff dismissed their case.
Okay, because we haven't been notified, so we should get that on record, because I got that.
The town council is part of it, so I'm surprised that you weren't given a copy.
No, we weren't actually, no.
No, because that was a big question. Why are we hearing this? Traffic, again, is a very serious problem there, and again, I, I checked and went and saw Marshall Adams in regards to the plan now. You changed the plan. And I noticed this letter from Mr. Nuttall is back in January, but you're going around the lot now. So what about the fire trucks? Because I think Deputy Chief Hal has some issues on that or questions.
Go ahead.
We spoke with him the other night and addressed them all, and we do have access all the way around. There's two turnarounds. So if there was an issue with one of the buildings, the fire trucks can ask, access it from both the left side and the right side. There is a fire lane right here on the left side of the property.
And part of the site plan review is we have to demonstrate and will demonstrate that the radius is everywhere, will be sufficient for.
You had the meeting with whom, though?
The fire chief was, Chief Nuttall was here at the planning board meeting the other night.
Okay. Does that satisfy you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a question, unless you're through.
No, go ahead.
You have the, was December ninth or sixteen, the variance was allowed for the front entrance?
Right.
I have a copy. It's not recorded. I don't know whether you have recorded it or not. And that's about to expire, is it?
No, because the appeal stalls, stays it. So the year actually starts when the appeal was withdrawn, which I believe was in June or July.
Oh, good. So you're okay till then. But you should record it, I think.
Well, the, the thought is, Peter has a purchase and sale agreement to purchase this property from the estate that owns this property, and it's subject to getting all of the permits.
Yeah.
So, and if we don't get any, if we don't get the permits, then there's no sense in recording any of the permits.
Okay.
We do have to watch the one year. At some point, we'd have to record it or come and ask for an extension.
June or July, whatever.
Some other delay.
You don't want a Cleveland Brown situation going on, do you?
Which is, what are you alluding to?
Is it the trade where they missed?
Oh, yeah.
The time, time change.
You all set?
Yep.
All right, so let's open it to the floor. Any questions or concerns? Can you state your name, please, and address?
I care whether it's remarried. I'm actually working with the sellers of the property. I'm an agent, and it's been, you know, a long road, and so I just wanted to comment on the traffic, because I've been there so many times. It's a pretty good sightline there, you know, and with the concrete barriers, you can basically just pull it in park and back out at this point for the last many years. And I do know that people don't expect that when they're driving by, but you have a clear sightline, and you also don't really have like a breakdown lane, so if you're turning and you have to blink around, nobody can, you know, nobody's going to go around you or be able to catch you off.
And you are widening that, that, that entrance way.
Well, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
You have a turn line, that would be better, but I, I don't.
Bless you.
Personally think that the traffic would be, you know, as dangerous as those stops are more than, you know, a good sightline.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, closing it to the floor and bringing it back.
I'd just like to ask you, do you have any other plans with that property to further develop it once you've done this?
Nope, this is it.
That, that is it. I can go on record.
That's the extent of the land that he owns or has a purchase and sale.
Yeah, but I, I've seen.
No, it's good, yeah.
I've seen where people just say that, then next, someone else comes around, new people, everything, and all of a sudden, you get more on it.
Well, he'd have to buy more land, and we're not, not looking to do that right now.
Well, that's why, it's an important question to me.
Sure.
All right, so. If that's the case, I wouldn't mind making a motion.
Okay.
On the petition of Fiori Brothers Incorporated, three four zero Brockton Ave., Abington, for a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-three A for planned commercial development. And the fact that we believe a variance, the hardships with a variance under one seventy-five thirty-three H three, owing to the topography of the soil and.
Shape.
Shape regarding allowing the parking closer to the buildings than the stipulations of the M U P P D zone specify, if it's satisfied that we allow parking lots to be less than twenty-five feet away from the building at five hundred Chestnut Street. Property being located on Assessor's map forty-nine lot seven in the M U P P D zone be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
It being after seven fifteen P.M., Abington's zoning board appealed, we hear the petition of Mary Elizabeth Rock Investment Trust, T.O. Box forty-one, Abington, for a special permit under one seventy-five eight E and one seventy-five thirty-five G one, constructed single-family home on lot two, and a single-family home on lot three, four six six Plymouth Street, in the floodplain wetland protection district. Property located on Assessor's map forty, lot fifty-nine, in the R thirty zone. And it's voting members, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just asking.
Okay. Four sixty-six Plymouth Street, correct?
Yes.
All right, so it says this look, location, assess the map, plan forty, lot fifty-nine, is subject to system development fees, must be paid to the office of the building prior to building permit sign off. That's public works. And that's, that's it?
For the record, my name is Jeff Tolman from SciTech Engineering. Would you like me to proceed?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Sorry, representing Mary Rock Investment Trust. With me here tonight is Jim Rock, part of the trust. And we, what we've done is we filed a special permit for the property located at four sixty-six Plymouth Street. The property's a three-point-one-four acre piece of land. It's located on the northeast corner of Plymouth Street and Central Street. As part of the package, I had submitted a copy of the current floodplain map, based, you know, from FEMA, the flood insurance rate map. The property is not located in a flood zone as shown on that map. However, the property, when you look at the nineteen-seventy-six floodplain map of the town of Abington, it does show that this property is in a floodplain on that particular map. But again, there are no floodplain issues that we're dealing with this particular site. I did have my wetland scientist walk the property, and the entire three-point-one-four acres is upland. There aren't any wetlands on or within the near vicinity of the, of the property. So therefore, what we did is we had filed a special permit for the exclusion under section one seventy-five thirty-five G, which basically states that, you know, if you, if you have a property such as this that does not show up on a flood, in a flood map on the current map, but is on the seventy-six map, the homeowner may apply to the Board of Appeals for a special permit exemption from inclusion in the floodplain in Wetlands District. So that's why we're here tonight, and that's the special permit that we're looking for. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have regarding this application.
So you have the frontage for the, for the driveway, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And.
For the driveway or the building?
For the driveway. I'm just looking at the driveway. You have the frontage for that. Lot three and lot two.
Yes.
Only building on lot two, is that correct?
At this present time, yes. But eventually, lot three is a buildable lot under the zoning bylaw for a lot in the R thirty zoning district.
And the reason why the house is facing the way it is?
Just preference.
It was, actually, there's a, a couple of the neighbors that abutted it asked us to turn the house so it wouldn't be facing them when they looked out their backyard. So they weren't looking at the front of the house.
Okay. And you agree?
That's why we turned it.
Well, maybe it makes it just unusual, that's all.
I, I agree, but that's what they asked us, so I didn't think there's a big issue. That's what we.
I mean, not making it unconforming or anything, it's just a preference.
No, they're allowed to do that right, and I don't have anything to say about it. I think it's nice that he did that for the people.
Okay.
And actually, it'll help out the future homeowner as well, because he's not looking directly at the back of the houses on Plymouth Street. Provides a better sightline, I, from the house itself and for the neighbors.
Okay, I just wondered why it was angled that way. Questions?
What, what again is the frontage on each of these?
So the planning board signed off the.
Do you have an A and R lot?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an A and R?
Yeah, the planning board hasn't endorsed an A and R.
This has actually been signed off.
That'll be something that I'll be verifying.
Okay.
Before that, they're only asking you, 17535, and yes. And with regards to how they place the house and the rest of it, that'll, you know, I'll be dealing with all of that.
Okay.
And if they feel they have it, fine, and they probably do.
And the soil, I notice here, the soil will be strictly from that, your location?
Yes.
And you won't be bringing any in? Okay. Looks good as far as me.
Do you have a design of the house itself, Russ?
You have, it was filed with the building permit. You had filed a building permit, you had the house plans, correct?
You had the house plans.
I don't remember, to be honest, but yeah, I've looked at so much stuff every day. But that's not what pertains to.
Right.
Correct.
It's basically, it's going to be the same house that's across the street. There's two houses across the street. It's going to be the same thing. It's going to be a raised ranch with a two-car garage.
All right.
So it keeps, those houses are probably 10 to 15 years old. They're just, it's going to be very similar to those.
And Mr. Keller of the Conservation signed off on it. He took, he had no issues with it. So I think that's important as far as the.
I just have one question. It's just, I imagine that I've misread the map, but in Lot 3, I was just looking at the legend and that line there, that's not a wetland, right? That's big square line within Lot 3.
According to this, it's a wetland.
This line here?
Yeah, that's right.
That's the building envelope.
That's the building, right.
So the dash, the light dash line would be the building setback line.
Oh, okay.
So that's the envelope where a future dwelling could be placed.
So the legend has it as a wetland line, but I was just wondering. You see that? Probably.
Yeah, I do see that.
Oh, yeah, it's, yes, it is somewhere, right? My apologies. So wetland line is darker?
It does look confused. It is. It is wrong. He's correct.
It is 100 feet to it.
But this is your envelope.
Yeah.
I mean, just from looking at it, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the envelope, it's the same style of line, but it's, the envelope is a lighter line than the wetland line would be a darker line if there were a wetland.
Okay.
On the property, in the vicinity of the property.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, is the board all set? All right, open it to the floor. Name and your address.
I just have a question about, because I don't know what is going on except I saw the surveyors and everybody. Is this the driveway coming out?
No.
No.
That's not, okay. The driveway for this?
It might be easier if you see it on this one, if you want to go up this driveway here.
The only driveway we're closing in is starting from the end off. There's an access easement here if I'm in this way. So the idea would be to go right here. Okay, all right. My only concern was that this is a low-lying area here and I know that we have a lot of water coming through here. We have a lot of water, and it rains in the end. This concrete wall is actually covered. It's supposed to be mapped from our property. But I believe, I don't know if it's mapped, but I thought I saw it mapped at some point when I bought my house, this was a cover, so anyways, I know I have a lot of, right, it rains in here. It goes down into this ditch and I just don't want, but that's filled.
That's bad.
That's bad, right.
That's all. That's my only.
Is that something you've noticed that?
I don't believe that's a head wall. If it is, it hasn't been functioning somewhat at the time because it's buried. There was some work going on in the swimming area, the garden, I believe that was over in there at some time. I will say this, there is a catch basin located right here at the lowest point on the property that collects any of that water that comes down here, goes into the drainage system and then flows off the property.
You're talking about that sewer for the back, right?
No, it's, well, it's not a sewer, it's a drain, it's a drain.
Yeah, catch basin, okay, catch basin. I don't know if the.
Correct.
Not in construction, but.
Yeah.
A lot of the water that was going closed down towards Plymouth, that water area. Like I said, it's coming.
When we get some pretty good downpours and we've got, you know, two or three days of rain, it's coming right through these gaps, this type of back gaps, all this water and it trickles through right into this. And I know there's, yeah, there's a, what you call a catch basin right there, right? Yep. And that's the other one, the street belt. Here's where it kind of come in. And this thing is covered with leaves.
Yeah, it's been blocked until.
Since, I don't think it's blocked, I think it's just, it might be clogged.
Well, I can tell you this, that I've lived in the house for over 50 years and I've never seen standing water there, so.
Which house is that?
Yeah, I wouldn't say.
It's 466 Plymouth Street. I can tell you where there is standing water due to the fact that there's, it comes in off the road, it's in this little area in here. It's just the way the road is and there's no curb or anything there. There is, sometimes there's some water that runs off the road into here, but. I've never seen any water in that area.
Yeah, I have not seen water standing. It seems to drain in and it just goes out. And I believe there's a hole in this thing.
So your main concern, sir, is that they don't do anything that's going to cause that to.
Miami concern is just that that doesn't get filled in.
Start backing up, right?
Yeah.
So you realize it is there?
Yeah. And again, for what we're doing, we do not have a house designed here for Lot 3. Eventually, when we get to that point, the whole reason we put in this access easement over here was to access the spec property from this location here and to avoid this altogether.
Okay.
But the frontage is on.
Who owns that catch basin? Anybody know?
There's no town easement on it? I mean, that drain line's been in for.
I believe my grandfather put it in.
What were you going to say, Marshall?
The frontage for Lot 3 is on, that's where you've created that.
On Plymouth Street.
17514, location of driveways, I think. I mean, I'll have to double check it. For any residential dwelling unit, the driveway access to all principal buildings shall be from the same location at which the required lot frontage is located. I mean, I'll have to reread this and whatnot, but I think the driveway, if what I'm reading here is correct, will have to come from, what is it, Plymouth Street?
Plymouth, yeah. I mean, it's possible to be done. We don't have a design on that. It would be.
17514, you want to double check and read that up, so, you know, that's all.
And it may be.
But one way or the other, as long as you're not going to be blocking it up, going through.
Right. Well, we could possibly come back for a variance on that particular lot.
If need be. If I'm correct in what I just read.
Right.
It just dawned on me when you said it.
Sure.
Have you been in front of the Conservation yet?
No, no, no.
There are no conservation issues on this particular property. It'd be, in its mind, I know we had our wetland scientist walk the property, but I think you had referenced the letter.
We did get a letter from a guy from the Conservation, right?
Yeah, I personally haven't seen it, but Jim has a copy of the letter.
Yeah, it's in the packet that you got.
I believe it states he's walked the property and there's no wetlands on the property.
Any other questions from the floor or, all right, I close it to the floor, all right?
I think he's had the criteria. I've looked this over pretty well, the package and everything, and they're nice lots. It's not some of the stuff that we do get. And I don't think it's detrimental to the town or the neighbors. The character of the neighborhood, hardship would be the shape and the.
Well, we filed for a special permit, not a variance, so.
Okay, not even going that route.
Yeah.
I don't see any safety issues, so I see this as okay.
And given what he's really asking for, as you said, a special permit, and it's just 1758E and 17535G1, which is really just basically.
Yep.
Permission to build on the land because we have a map that's 30 years old or 40 years old at this point that says it's a floodplain. I personally don't have an issue with that.
Okay, I like the idea that you've talked to the neighbors and, you know, I mean, you're actually setting this house in a position where the neighbors would be happy with. You're working with them, that's a good thing.
Given that, I wouldn't mind making a motion, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
On the petition of Mary Elizabeth Rourke Investment Trust, TO Box 41, Abington, for a special permit under 1758E and 17535G1 to construct a single-family home on Lot 2. Do we allow the, for Lot 3 at this point, given that you have issues on your driveway?
Yes, that's not an issue. You guys should worry about, that's my problem.
Single-family home on Lot 3, 466 Plymouth Street in the floodplain and wetland protection district, property located on assessors map 40, Lot 59 in that R30 zone be approved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with it.
It being after 7:20 PM, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals holds petition of Sprague Realty Trust, 50 Sprague Street, Hyde Park, for a special permit under 17521H5. Other industrial uses open on storage of goods and materials used in connection with a commercial or industrial use and waiver of environmental impact statement under 17535, 1295 and 1 through 25 Bedford Street, property located on assessors map 64, Lot 71 in the TB District.
This proposal located assessors map 64, Lot 71, BS70 bearing on the storage system, 1345 Bedford Street.
For the record, voting numbers are?
Same. Tommy.
Good evening, I'm Frank Giorgio, so the property owner of Sprague, 18. Nephew Joe, he's the project manager for the Route 18 widening project highway. And we've just been here a couple of times already in front of you regarding our operation and the board has granted us a special permit to continue the operation. And we're just looking for a special permit to allow as a staging area for the Route 18 widening project in addition to the present operation that we are working on.
So, which permission?
Go ahead.
Basically, you're back before us because we, it was uncovered in the last hearing that you hadn't asked for permission basically to store, and stop me if I'm wrong, Marshall, the goods and materials in this case, it is, is the soil and the fill and those sorts of things that would be stored.
Materials that are going to be processed, correct?
The materials that are going to be processed, okay. So I guess in this case, does, like, when the project is over, the, does the special permit end? Is that something?
That would be up to you.
Correct, because this is not a variance. This is up to us to make a decision.
It's up to you to set times and limitations as you see fit.
Yeah, conditions.
Conditions, yeah.
And Marshall, you're satisfied that H5 is the all-encompassing clause, open storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial industrial use?
21H5, I believe it is.
Yep.
Sir, if I could clarify something?
Please.
I believe what we're asking in terms of storage of goods and materials are actually those products that would be related to the construction project. The processing materials has been an ongoing operation and is not up for discussion at this time. It is strictly materials related to the project and you are correct, when the project is done, the need for those storage materials would expire.
Right.
Also for the storage of equipment, trucks.
Well, that's already been granted.
Well, that was already granted.
That was already granted.
Yeah. All we're talking about now is soil for the project.
Right. Well, soil for the project, lumber, steel, pipe.
Whatever equipment they're using.
Materials.
Yes.
Equipment is all said, it's the materials for the project.
I think I disagree with you with regards to it is just for this project. I think what we uncovered last time, when it was originally industrial, this open lot storage was still a permit, was still a requirement back then, but it was never asked for and never required and nobody ever dealt with it. So I think what we're dealing with here now is for him to operate, he should be having that permit. He's got a grandfathered use and it's been ongoing and so he needs that special permit to operate in general. I think it was something that was missed in years gone by when, even before he was grandfathered.
Do we know what materials and processing we're doing at the moment? Did you tell us in our last meeting? I'm afraid I missed the last meeting.
What we do, we bring in raw material such as soil, rock, concrete products, loam, stumps, whatever we, the topsoil and soil material and the rocks gets mixed together, crushed and used as processed material as a, for road gravel and other uses. And we, the loam gets screened and used for loam and the stumps gets grinded and used for wood chips and that's a variety of uses that we've been doing all along.
Thank you.
And the piles of these materials can happen in anywhere in the lot, you know. It's not that as we use one pile, the process gets moved to one place and then a newer material is going to be put another place, so really there's no set location.
Right, thank you. And I saw, Mr. Mullin, that you said in the last meeting that we were meeting today to determine whether the level of use is, to see if it mirrors the proposed use that he has. Thank you.
So Marshall, you're saying that they should have had a special permit?
It's my opinion that back when it was industrial, as I recall, looking at the zoning book back then, that there was still H5 that we're talking about right now was still written as it is now and was something that hadn't been addressed. And I came across that when I was looking into this grandfathered issue as to what was required, so, but it is, you know, it's gone now, so yes, I believe that that's required for him to operate.
Yeah, because we're dealing now.
Correct.
So if we vote tonight, we'd have to vote on the special permit for?
For him to operate storing materials used in conjunction with his operation.
What he's been doing over the years.
Well, that doesn't, it is what it is.
Yeah, that's grandfathered.
That's gone, that's passed.
But to do that, we couldn't decide that tonight. We'd have to redo that for another time.
Not necessarily.
Open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with a commercial industrial use is what it says right here. That's what I'm looking on the application, if you vote favorably.
Yeah, I saw that there.
That takes care of it.
Because I mean, I had asked initially if this was something we could build a sunset clause into based on the fact that when the Route 18 is widened, could we sunset the clause out? But you're saying.
Yes, you can.
We could, but at the same time, we would in essence be impinging on Mr. Giorgio's ability to operate his business.
Well, he'd have to come before us again, correct?
Or they'd have to come back before us in four to five years for that reason.
That's correct. You can set something that you want him to revisit this in a period of time, can be a part of your stipulation if that's as you choose.
With that said, according to you, this is a business he's been doing for, you know, a couple decades, correct?
This is 1989.
Yes.
And it's a permit he should have, in your opinion, probably should have obtained from day one.
In my opinion, it was required back when he first started, when it was industrial.
Now it's what? It's a different zone?
It's the exact same thing, except for now it's a.
A TO.
It's, the zone has changed, but open lot storage is still a special permit that's required.
And that's what he'll be doing?
And that's what he's looking at right now.
Bringing in that equipment.
Well, it's, yeah, it's materials.
It's material.
Material, correct, material.
In 2000, 2002 and 2004, I went a couple of times in front of the town manager and told him what the operation we were doing and he didn't say anything about that we needed a special permit for the storage of the material.
I have seen correspondence that supports that statement.
If I know in the back then that I need a special permit, I would apply for it.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like maybe it's just something that was overlooked.
I agree.
Well, it's kind of an important thing to be overlooked.
I agree.
That's why he's here.
Right. Well, we good on the board right now?
I am good now.
All right. All right, could we open it up to the floor, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Say your name and address, please.
My name is Bobby Royan, I'm at fourteen twenty-three Bedford Street, immediately adjacent to the Giorgio property, and I've been owning and operating managing that building for five years. My office is on the second floor, completely hundred percent overlooking all of their processing, all of their land, and it interests me, I like watching what they do over there for whatever reason, but my background is following, I have an extensive background in civil engineering, construction as relates to soil mechanics and earthwork. It's not what I'm doing now with my life, I, obviously, you guys know what I do with that building, which is on the same side of the street, and everybody has been respectful to me, and I felt the need to return the respect and give you my professional opinion about what I believe they're doing. I see the processing, I see the cut come in from their road work, I see them pile up the rocks here, the dirt over there, and the topsoil, and everything they do is above par, hundred percent. Everything is clean, everything is organized, extremely organized, hardworking people, very respectful people, always willing to lend a hand, and I wanted to just express that. I got to the meeting late last time, my mother-in-law's in the hospital, and I felt bad because anything these people do, from what I've seen so far watching them like it, like a hawk only because I enjoyed watching them, is, is above par. So, I was happy to find out that they received the contract to widen Route eighteen. Why? Because I knew they were going to do it properly. If they want to store whatever they need to store on their site for the amount of time required to do this job, we've got to play ball with them as a town, we've got to help them, because flip side to that is, all that shit's all over the street, up and down, excuse me.
Yeah.
We don't need it, they're going to be blocking roads, blocking side streets everywhere.
Yeah.
And we should be very appreciative that they want to use their property to stage all that construction. So, once again, I haven't spoken with these people, I only know other people on site, but I think I know the family, very respectful.
Thank you, thank you.
Worth it, I wanted you to see what I see every day, there's nothing going on over there other than right up top.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question about the difference between how much soil is actually being managed on site right now and what the volume increase is going to be from the Route eighteen, because I think that was part of the question, so I think I heard some about tear slips last time, if you were going to take a look at them. Do we have an idea of the change in volume of material that's going to go on that site? I think that that may be a way for you to, you know, if you put a sunset clause on it, that would be a way to address it, if you know what the current, current volume is versus to larger volume later. And I, I think it's a question that I'd like to have answered anyway, how much material is going to go in and out of that site?
I mean, has that been figured out?
Material changes on a daily basis, sometimes we bring more material in than we take out, sometimes we take out more material than, than we bring in, but usually it's about the same, it doesn't change that much.
But with this project, should there be more volume?
No, no, really, because this project will also use the material that we, we're processing, so it would be about the same balance, more or less, you know?
I think we tried to explain previously that the soils that come in and return to job sites are from thirty, forty, or even fifty miles away sometimes. The, the site itself can handle a, a certain amount of that, of that type of processing work, we don't expect it to be a substantial increase from, from past years, the truck trips will be shorter, now they're only traveling three or four miles along Route eighteen, but that Route eighteen project is just taking the place of jobs that we had in Cambridge and in Boston and, and other places.
I saw in here that you have soil coming in, and the company said it's all cleaned and.
Yes, it's all cleaned.
It's in good shape.
All the soil that comes in, it's already, it's all been tested before we bring it in.
Just to clarify that again, though, you're saying before you come in like Cambridge, Watertown and all of that, do I understand this meaning to say you're local, so now you can do a lot more? That's the way I figure it, what you just said.
We're trying to say we're going to do approximately the same amount with fewer trucks and.
Okay.
And less, less distance, yes. The, the other aspect, the request for, for tear slips, we have proposed, and I believe it's now been granted, the, the small office trailer and the scale, so, you know, within a few months, we'll be able to tell you what the, what the true tear is, it just, we didn't have a, any good, any close accounting system with the scale.
You're going to have more.
We will, we will know what, what's going in and out.
Did you have any more questions?
Well, I don't really think I got an answer, I don't think I've ever heard a number of what they're handling now or what they're going to handle in the future, I feel like we're getting.
Why is that important?
Because I think, I, they put it in their bed, I'm sure, it's got to be in there, the volumes have to be there, I think, I do think that there's going to be more volume coming in there, because a piece of equipment that's not always running, if it runs all the time, it's going to have more material on site.
At the last meeting, was there input about how many trucks you expect to come, how many loads you expect to go in?
They didn't answer that either.
How many?
They said that there's going to be eight on site at night, but they didn't.
So ma'am, if she's asking her a question?
Sorry.
I would like to hear.
Well, sorry, actually, I could ask Kathy, but how many trucks today go in?
Sometimes five trucks, sometimes ten trucks, sometimes fifteen, it all depends what comes in.
There's five to fifteen at the moment?
Sometimes twenty, sometimes nothing.
So there's a variety, is that, that's what you're saying?
We never kept it count.
Well, do we have an idea of with this new project, how many trucks, will it be more than, more than five to fifteen?
The only other thing I'd like to say about truck traffic is, the, the project is going to get built, right?
Yes, yes.
It is by us, it could have been by, by X, Y, Z construction.
Yes.
Whoever was building it would have had the same number of trucks to take soil out and the same number of trucks to, to bring soil back in. Now, that may have come from wherever that other contractor was staging from, again, the, the other contractors all have the right to stage on DOT property. So, part of the project is the cloverleaf right at Route three, we, we are actually doing work at, at the cloverleaf, and if you ever drive up Route one twenty-eight, those contractors all have piles of dirt in everything with cloverleaf. So, either it's going to be on our property, you know, behind a cover of, of trees to some extent, or, or it's going to be at, at five to ten different sites along Route eighteen. And, and just one other point on that, we are still speaking with Weymouth and Southfield, this is not the only staging facility on the job, not, not by any stretch.
Because you need more than?
You need more than one.
Because there are different portions of the, of the eighteen that you'd be doing.
That's correct.
Because of the proximity of the, the project to our property, the amount of traffic generated by our trucks would be less than if we had to go all the way out and all the way in.
Any more questions from the audience?
I just had a question about the entrance and the exit, did you get approval for the, are you going to have an entrance and an exit, or you can only have one driveway that you're going to use?
So the, the existing driveway opposite Vineyard will remain for the time being, we do have the permit from, from DOT for, for the other entrance to the north, and we have started construction of that entrance.
Is it possible to be widening that those to live and have a bit of a turning lane? Because your trucks right now are stopping traffic sometimes in both directions, you probably don't see it, but we do.
No, it, it's, it's a good point, it's, it's a very good point, and it's Kathy, right?
Yeah, that's me.
No problem. So, although we've been low bidder now for five months, we are not a hundred percent free and clear with the state for all construction. Some construction has commenced, if you've noticed on Route eighteen, there are still just a few minor environmental questions, and we're waiting for a final go-ahead on those aspects.
On eighteen itself.
On the job site, yes. So, non-environmental is, is free and clear, environmental should be clear within the next few weeks, okay? So, our property actually does have a wetland at the front, it is a terrific idea to, to do that widening as early as we can, and yes, make a turning lane for the trucks. We could agree now, yes.
Wetlands.
We can condition that. I know, they're neighbors there.
The, the road is getting widened, so the wetland gets filled, on a temporary basis, we, we can do whatever we choose with it, and making a temporary turning lane is, is a great idea.
I think that there is a stormwater management plan, like a SWIP that you're putting together for.
That's correct.
That property, would you give it to both conservation and zoning when it's available? And do you have any idea what's going to be?
You know, if, if zoning, zoning would like it, yes, we, we would.
Because I think that has some dust measures and other things in it, but I think it would be helpful.
Sure, we, we can provide that.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Phil Gray, three Vineyard Road, you stated that you may be using other sites, are there any other sites in Abington?
Again, the, there are other store, detention and stormwater basins in Abington and.
No, no, not that, I meant like.
Materials.
Nothing on, on private property that we know of, but again, any property that belongs to the project is, is, you know, available to us and, you know.
Okay, just one question, so do most truck trips per day, about twenty trucks per day?
You know, we're not going to, we're not going to get into accounting.
Well, no, just at the last meeting, the chairman asked a question, how many truck trips?
I did ask that question.
And Mr. Bergen asked, how many truck trips per day? You must have some estimate on how many truck trips per day?
I, I, I don't know.
We cannot estimate at this time because it, it depends, sometimes you get the.
Like fifty, you mean mostly that per day?
No.
It, it was very difficult to do that.
Delivery from a material suppliers such as pipe, steel, whatever, and they all could come up in one day, and there could be maybe five, ten trucks more, and, but on a regular day, I, I doubt that we will exceed twenty trucks a day.
Twenty, okay. The question then, if I can add to his, that do these trucks have jake brakes or any of that stuff, where they're really noisy, or are they a standard pickup truck or Euclid or whatever you might be using?
They all.
You know what I mean by the jake brakes, you hear them going down the highway and they downshift and it sounds like.
The compression release.
Yeah.
Yeah, the jake brake, they're actually using the transmission to slow down.
Right.
Using the engine to slow down.
The engine, yeah. Do we have them, I don't know if we have them or not.
I know.
Okay, but that's the noise factor that would help.
They do, but you want to ask them not to use them.
Right.
Otherwise you wouldn't have been hearing about it now.
I was going to make that.
Anything you can do to help the neighborhood is a good thing.
Understood, understood.
I had another question for you, sorry, Dennis, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, I think there's a gentleman in the other corner, did you have a question?
Richard Pearce, South Shore Terminals, Anderson Pearce, the old Anderson Pearce, fourteen thirty-one Bedford Street, third generation, we've been there, occupied the property since nineteen fifty-four, and I hate that we probably ran a hundred and thirty trucks out of there, but people in town probably remember. Right now, at least, we probably have more trucks going in and out of there on a lease basis with Alamo, and the ones that come in than Mr. Giorgio is going to have, and I don't think it's fair to ask how many trucks he's going to have, because it depends on what they're going on the job, he may use, he may use two of this tomorrow and five the day after, the job's only going to move at a certain pace. But as far as that and engine brakes, jake brakes, people in ours, our terminal, Alamo's got them, my son's got one on our truck, it's a safety device, and you see a lot of it with the guys hauling in from Canada into Cape Cod, London to come down, they use them coming down, I don't know whether you can restrict them or whether you want to restrict them.
Wouldn't want to restrict them.
Other places do where it's heavily populated, it's really not heavily populated up there, and I remember, and I'm sure the town remembers years ago, the Giorgios, when Joe Nisby and the Barretts needed storage, stepped up and they ran it up, and they ran it up for cost, and I didn't hear any complaints back then about how many trucks were out there, what was going on, we never connected to it, but there's a lot of other people up there that did, I don't see that what they're doing is any harm to the town at all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have any restriction on how many trucks can go in and out on your place, do you?
Different times, different amounts, Alamo's got their trailers in there, loaded with crane pods, they may sit there all winter, they might sit there until there's a job, they'll take them all out and do a job in town with a crane, put it together, do the job, bring it back on Monday, so it's a constant flow of truck traffic there, you get a lot of troops up there too, the trucks, that's just part of life, that's what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question about.
One more, and we got to move on.
About weekends, you know, I'm trying to think about conditions, and is there going to be some way we're going to get notified when you're going to work weekends out there? Or hours outside what we specified?
We can't force them to do that, right?
No, I think they're going to work it out.
So Kathy, DOT does have a website for the project, and the, the super special weekends where, where the Route three, or not, the Route eighteen.
Yeah, and I, those will have plenty of notice.
Yes.
I'm thinking about other times.
Other weekend work, we, we can have it posted on the website, and, you know, you'd have to, you have to.
Yeah, because, you know, there are other.
Are you on the email blast, by the way? There isn't, okay, so we, we can have, you know, I'll, I'll put it up to the public relations people, have it, have it blasted out.
Okay, I'd like to close it to the floor, I think we've really beaten it up tonight. I'm just glad that people got to talk about it a little bit, and I understand where it was coming from here. Just back to the board now, close it to the floor.
The only, the only thing I'd like to do, so we don't get caught down the road, is they had mentioned before with hours, something like seven to six, is that acceptable or something like that, if we put that in there?
Seven to six is acceptable.
Because the concern is, you know, all of a sudden it's eight creeps up or five o'clock, there is a town thing anyway at seven, noise factor.
So why don't we say seven to seven, and then a special notification if there are off-hours or, or weekends?
I think that's a great idea that you notify the neighbors that, that's, that's great, if it's on the website, you said you have a website.
The man usually goes to work at quarter seven, three, seven o'clock.
So seven to seven?
Next question would be, you said it's got four point five years for duration, so I would suggest that this would run for four point five, and then if it goes beyond that, you would have to come in front of it.
What, can we just make it five?
Well, you can, but then if they're done.
So just so it would.
It's going to run over anyway.
Yeah.
When does a municipal project up and on?
Right, exactly, I think, I think we should give them.
Wait a minute, what about the school? That's ahead of schedule one year.
Oh, okay, I don't know.
Rest your case.
What's the exception?
I'll go with the five then.
I would go with the five.
After the Route widening projects completed, we're still going to keep on doing the same operation.
Right. I'm not questioning that.
So I guess, I guess that's my only concern regarding this is, we've learned a lot about, or at least I have over the past few months, about Giorgio's business.
Right.
And we learned last month that they basically need this permit to be in business.
Right.
So, you know, on the one hand, you know, I certainly understand saying, well, we're going to sunset it at. gonna sunset it at five years or four and a half years or whatever it is, but at the same time, what we're then telling the Giosos is if you wanna stay open, you have to come see us in, you know, whatever it is, 2022, which it just seems counter to business. Like a special permit by definition goes away when they close their doors.
Right. So you're saying that...
Within thirty days of them closing their doors.
They're not closing their doors.
No, I'm just saying, because it's not a variance, it doesn't go with the land. It's a special permit. It goes with the business. It goes with, you know, with this particular thing, so...
But it doesn't cloud anything. That's my only thought was so that this drags on and ends, and who's there to watch it and make sure they're not doing additional stuff beyond and beyond and beyond? That's my thought.
But this is their business. I was not aware that their business...
No, no, not this part of the business. This other part.
Yeah, it is.
No, it is. I think...
This is exactly what they do.
The materials that they do that.
Exactly what they do is they scoop up roadways or land from another thing and process it and spit it back out in a different state, in different states.
And I agree with you that, you know, we look at this project coming up, they come up for a permit, a special permit, but as Marshall said, they need this special permit to be in business, and they never got it. So I mean, if you're gonna condition it, which is probably a smart thing to do, but then again, on the other hand, you know, they should have had this permit before they, when they were doing stuff last year. So what do we...
Back in eighty.
And that could have been conditioned back then too.
A special permits for the storage trailers, all the storage trailers, makes sense, because then when they go away, you don't have a right to put them back. But in this case, just because Route 18...
I'm not gonna argue with it.
I know. It's just, no, not argue. We're talking about it.
Then at that point, they'll be on, you know, whatever it is, Route 3 or Route 1.
I mean, I agree with you in a lot of ways.
I just wanna make sure we're putting, and the neighbors are happy and too, so we're trying to make this work for everybody, but if that's what you do, I withdraw that.
I'm just...
Well, I'm not sure, though. I'm counting in the middle too, because, I mean, this is their business. They should have had this permit a long time ago. Their project coming up now is a special permit.
Well, I think, I don't have a vote, so I hope you forgive me for saying, but I don't think a time requirement is actually a reasonable requirement, because it is their business despite what Mr. Gioso said. Actually, it's a special permit for all their work that they're doing, and they should have had it before, right? And it's for all the work, so you can't really, and it dies when they close the doors. So you can't really put a requirement on that, you know, a time requirement. I don't think that's reasonable. It's certainly very reasonable to the seven to seven which they offered and the special notification of off-hours and weekends which they offered. Those are requirements that we can put into our special permit and are very reasonable. But, you know, this is a special permit to do their work, so I'm not too sure if it's...
Well, the question I have is if, would they have gotten that special permit back in, what year was it?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-eight, eighty-nine, something like that. Yeah, more than likely.
There it is. Yeah.
It was industrial.
It was an industrial...
Yeah, more than likely they would have, yes, in my opinion.
Okay.
And presumably the health department anyway maintains what work...
Well, at least we're talking it out here, and like you said, it was commercial at the time.
Industrial.
Industrial. Okay. All right.
I'd like to make a motion on the petition of Sprague Realty Trust, 50 Sprague Street, Hyde Park, for a special permit under 17521H5, other industrial uses, open lot, storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial industrial use, and waiver environmental impact statement under 17535 at 1295 and 1325 Bedford Street. Be approved with the following conditions: operating hours, traffic be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and advanced public notice be given on extended hours and, what was the other?
Off-hours and weekends.
Off-hours and weekend use. Be approved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye or nay?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Okay, work with the neighborhood.
We will.
Definitely work with the neighborhood.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There was that one last thing.
Where is Russell was up there, or twenty-four seven?
Yeah, nothing to do with you. Nothing to do with...
Or twenty-four seven. He was grandfathered in too.
Without the permit. I have no idea, but please the neighborhood. Please the neighborhood.
So...
Where were we?
Everybody.
Take care.
Good night.
There was something else about, I think that was just like the...
Somebody's still watching us.
Bylaw changes?
No, I think it's all taped anyway. What's that?
Bylaw changes?
Yeah.
Bylaw changes?
Yeah, there's a...
Oh, yeah.
The package, what we're gonna do here, if, and I...
I didn't grab my package till late, so I haven't studied it.
So to let you know on this, I've been working on the sign review committee since back in March, and we've had numerous meetings. So we just put our final touches to it, this week's meeting, and I'm going to give Marshall a copy if he doesn't get one from town manager Monday. And so the changes that he has regarding here, that I think there's seven of them, that we're not gonna discuss tonight, because that would be kinda duplicating what we're doing with the other work. So Marshall will then take those changes, if they apply to him at all, these seven, six or seven changes, and put it into the proposed changes of the bylaws. It's gonna go to town council, then we're gonna meet with the planning board and the zoning board, and Marshall will have his input, which is very important, and because he's gonna enforce this law. Hopefully, it's a pretty good package, I think, and it's very, hopefully, very easy to interpret.
So we're talking about actually discussing this in like a couple months?
This, no, probably even shorter than that.
Okay.
What we're discussing, no, he had some other ones that are non-related.
John's been through all the signs. I've got some other ones. We'll look at the whole package together, put it all in one thing.
Okay.
And then we'll, then we'll all hash it out.
See, one was like...
I don't wanna have redundant stuff.
So we're gonna look at this first while all you guys are...
I'll look at what they've got, the sign people have.
Yeah.
And we'll put, I'll see how mine jobs with theirs. We'll come up with one thing and then we'll, then we'll give it for you guys.
So we got plenty of time to do that.
Because we've got two separate documents. I need to join the two, make sure they make good sense before we do this.
In the meantime, we should read this.
This is slightly premature, but I wanted to make sure we got on the agenda.
Go ahead, read them if you want.
No, I mean, on our own, read these?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But one is like the carport definition of it, which has nothing to do with signs.
So you guys have been working on this?
I have, he's been working with signs. I have other things I run into that I have, geez, I gotta do something with that, and I have a little packet with all those, and I just decided to put them all together, and Marion put it in. I says, yeah, we'll just throw it in. We'll get it all together with the two, but we need to get it done.
So we should make a motion to...
To...
Table it for now.
Yes.
Table it and read on your own.
Read on our own and incorporate it down the road.
Okay. You wanna make that move?
There'll be a quiz in December.
December, right around the corner, December. Okay, wow. Time's flying.
Make a motion to table the...
Proposed recommendation.
Proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws till December.
What do we got?
Fourteenth?
In December, next meeting.
Fourteenth, I think.
December meeting.
December meeting.
Second Thursday in December.
Okay.
Let's see.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, John, you wanna turn that off?
Yeah.
Motion to watch some football.
Yes, actually, nine o'clock. We're doing well. I hope you, I just figured, you know...
Yeah, no, that's cool.
It's okay. I mean, instead of jumping around...
Yes, no, that's better. The meeting's really well done, Mr. Chairman.
Just stay with John. Nothing personal.
Thought you were mad at him.